Good evening. Rebecca, could you please open with an invocation?
Yeah, Pastor Rebecca O'Black from McKnight Church. You know, as I was praying for you guys today, I started thinking actually of a guy named Cornelius Vanderbilt. And he was actually born into poverty and through just creative business solutions, he became the most wealthy person in the United States back in the day. And so really what I want to just release over you is just creativity and innovation. So let's just pray. Jesus, I just thank you for this meeting and I just thank you for this time and God for even the progress that happened from 5:30 to 6:00 PM tonight. God, I just thank you that you are making Freeport wealthy again. Even as Cornelius, he worked his way through the ferry system and the railroad system, we have likenesses in this area. And so God, we just take that testimony of your goodness, save it for ourselves, that you are building us up once again through creative business solutions. And so Father, I just bless this meeting tonight. I bless each council member with prosperity through innovation. Lord, I just bless this meeting and I bless this collaborative group of people that work together for one another, for this city. And I just thank you, Lord, that you always come to prosper us. And Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Rebecca. So now we will officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder Persson's Bornhamon.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brashaw.
Here.
Mysick.
Here.
And Berberay.
Here.
And could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Busker?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the US law, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with item number one, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Parker. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the council meeting on November 18th, 2018. Is there a motion for this approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman Mysick, seconded by Alderman Bornhamon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Do we have any public comments signed up? No. Then we will move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda will be considered to be routine in nature and be acted as one motion, unless there's a member of the council who would like to have something removed for further discussion. Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of approving and placing on file the Foreign Fire Insurance Board meeting minutes from August 8th, 2019, the building permit reports from October 2019, executive director test dom report for the Greater Freeport Partnership dated November 27th, 2019, the approval of the payroll for pay period ending November 23rd, 2019, in the total of $465,484.31, as well as the approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $1,384,389.34. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Berberay. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number five is recognition of service award by Manager Crowe.
Hey, Madam Mayor. Chris, do you want to come up? So, and Chief? So this is recognizing Christopher Brandon for, recognized for five years of service as of December 15th, 2019, the city of Freeport. And you also get five, five whole Greater Freeport Partnership bucks to go with it. Congratulations, and I'll turn it over to Chief.
I just want to introduce you, Chris Brandon. Five years on the Freeport Fire Department. Chris started December 12th, 2019, working for the Fire Department for 15 years. He has rotted and volunteered firefighter for four years. He has bachelor's degree in smoke and fire. Since joining the FFP, Chris is a member of the paramedic school. He is a member of our Major's division, 17, technical rescue team. And he has represented the department as a servant leader for smoking turkey recently. And last year, the Thanksgiving meal committee, his heart is still pretty handy around our building that you can see and touch about anywhere you look around our department, our stadium. In time off, he's a husband, father of four, and enjoys work, working in concrete projects. I would like to introduce his family and his wife, Michelle. Hi, Michelle. And children, Brenna, she's not able to be with us, Stevie, Ella, Violet, and Noria. Can you guys wait for us? Yeah, all right, very good. Congratulations, Chris. We appreciate all the hard work you do for the Freeport Fire Department and citizens.
And any of you that also wanted to speak tonight, if you'd like to come up here that behind, we might as well just all walk up at once, so. Well, we are here tonight to recognize Brian Borger. He has been a huge vital part of so many things within the city. And it is my pleasure and it's my honor to stand here to recognize you tonight. You have been a part of the Police and Fire Commission for 28 years. When Brian started in 91, he came on immediately as the secretary. It was only a few years later that he took the role of chairman and has been a part of that since. But I've also had the pleasure of serving with Brian on many areas, from small business to cruise night to the Fish Tank Committee. Brian has been instrumental and gives 110% in everything that he does. And we just want to say to you, Brian, we thank you for everything that you've done in the city because it's always been for the betterment. And we are proud to have you be a part of that. And so I just have just a certificate of recognition for you and a small gift certificate that you can take your wife for dinner when you leave. But we just want to say thank you for your many, many years of service.
It's truly an honor for me to stand up here with Brian. He said very nice things for me a couple of weeks ago. But I will tell you that every person in the police department has been hired by you or been promoted by you. And just as much as any chief that has been at the police department, your thumbprint in the creation of our department is there. And I can't thank you enough for being part of our department and creating the department. And we have a couple of things for you. Both the Fire Department and us, just in recognition of all the service that you've done at the police department all the time. I know we get paid off for all that time. We also, I don't know, we've never gotten a point from us. I, I, I'm just gonna step in and give a minute to everybody else. Brian, it's been an honor, a short time, that I've been acquainted. The second person I met coming to Freeport was you. We had a hamburger at Morse's and discussed the future of the Freeport Fire Department and your ideals and your vision for what this community needed. And I'm honored to have had your support and become the chair of the Freeport Fire Department. I must, Mayor, Chief Summers, sentiments that you've either hired or promoted every single person in the Freeport Fire Department. And we are all saying your accolades and your praises and the impact that you've had on this community. You certainly set the stage for our advancements in technology and use of technology and bringing their open minds and kind of hearts and service to this event. And I'm sure that will serve the Freeport community long, long after all this. And thank you very much for everything you've done for us. John, welcome.
Certainly. Well, Brian, it's a, and to the members of the council and to the citizens of Freeport, certainly an honor to be here tonight. Kind of ironic, but interestingly enough, because 28 years ago, I was a member of the city council and I was sitting at one of these desks. My initials aren't inscribed on them, I don't think. You know, from that perspective, when we asked Brian Borger to serve in the Police and Fire Commission, and I chaired the Police and Fire Committee that made sure that Brian Borger got appointed to that committee. And I was really young then, I was only four or five. He was a few years older than I am. Hard to believe it's been 28 years. But on behalf of the Illinois Senate, certainly recognize you for your service to the Freeport Board of Police and Fire Commission and to the citizens of Freeport. Congratulations and a doubt well done, Brian.
It doesn't stop.
It doesn't stop. It should. It's good, it deserves recognition, Brian. And I certainly appreciate you for your 28 years of service. On behalf of the Illinois House of Representatives having served as a Police and Fire Commissioner for 28 years, I thank you. You know, it's been mentioned before, you don't get paid for a lot of these jobs. And your name is consistently circulated down the city of Freeport for your selfless acts and your dedication and your service. And I'm thankful because it's hard to find good people that not only serve, but serve consistently over a period of time. And so on behalf of the House of Representatives, but also as a citizen of Freeport, thank you for everything you've done for us.
Brian, on behalf of the rest of the commissioners, we're gonna sort of miss you. You have the Commissioner every day on the compass, you are a true man. He was always there to keep us objective and keep us balanced, to make sure that we were asking the right questions and making sure that every single candidate or officer that came in front of us was not only treated fairly, but objectively and with compassion. And if you lost the lasting impression on all of us as commissioners, you could only hope in your absence that we can do half the job that you've done in these past decades. Thank you.
Is that?
Your fault.
Anything else? Well, I'd like to thank the city of Freeport, the city of Freeport, over all these years. Mayor Getz, Mayor Weiss, Mayor Ballack, Mayor Miller. I made it through all their terms. So that's an accomplishment by itself. One of the things that I guess I always looked at was sort of an acid test. I call it my acid test. And that acid test was the person that was sitting across from me, could they handle the situation that they might be in trouble? Were they able to handle it? So as a new applicant to the Fire Department, the Police Department, did I think they could handle that situation? As we look at promotions, do I think that person can handle the situation and responsibility that they position? And I was just sort of my acid test. When you go through all the questions and all the things, do there's something that kind of a gut feel, if you will, can tell you whether or not that person is the right person? So made a lot of decisions, hopefully they were good decisions. And I appreciate my paycheck for the last 28 years. And I understand that if I stayed two more years, I would get a pension. And I would want to get a pension.
It looks as if you think you have a plan there.
So I thank all the officers for being here tonight. Thank you. Appreciate that. And families, appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, item number seven. Madam Clerk, could you please read the appointments?
Skip to page, sorry. Acceptance of an appointment of Matthew Summers to the Ethics Commission, effective immediately. Acceptance of an appointment of Matthew Summers to the Stevenson County Emergency Telephone System, the 911 Board, effective immediately. Acceptance of an appointment of Bob Smith to the Board of Fire and Police Commission, effective immediately, through April 30th, 2020.
If it pleases the council, we could just act as one motion on this?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on these appointments?
Very sorry, Mayor, I skipped the whole one.
Alderman Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
Bornhamon.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
The appointments are approved eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number eight is the presentation of Travelers and the IPRF insurance proposal. Ethan?
Mayor, Council, good evening. Thank you for having me. Quick reminder, recap. My name's Ethan Selsinger. I work with Gallagher. I started handling the city's insurance and risk management in fall 2017. A lot of familiar faces still here on the board that were there when the city transitioned. Going through the renewal this year, we fully marketed your program line by line to make sure that, you know, that our job is to go to the insurance marketplace and represent you and go to different carriers to ensure not only do we have the most competitive pricing, but also the most competitive program. Our market leverage as a whole from Gallagher was part of the reasons why the city moved to Gallagher two years ago was we handle more municipalities than any other broker in the world, which gives us a strong plant in the marketplace. So here's kind of a review of what we did and who we went to. So from your property standpoint, we went to three different companies, work comp, three different companies on the package. Your package is your liability. So law enforcement, HR, employment practices. We dished that out to a couple more to, you know, get a test of the marketplace. I'm sure some of you on the board in your other day jobs are familiar with maybe the insurance marketplace as a whole right now. It's not a nice place, regardless of what sector you're in. Rates are going up. The global insurance marketplace is kind of trending with new cap modeling and technology is kind of driving forces due to losses that the industry has had as a whole throughout the entire global marketplace. As you can see, the reason why we did a full package in full kind of revamp of the marketing was the city unfortunately has had a lot of claim activity, both on the work comp and especially on the package side. So what we did was try and carve out a couple of those pieces of law enforcement to see if it made sense to place that on a monoline policy. At the end of the day, everything ended up kind of remaining status quo. The current incumbent carriers are still providing the most competitive pricing and program. Here's just a review of your structure, kind of, you know, your deductibles, your limits, and who the carriers are. Nothing has changed since last year. We were able to keep all your deductibles the same, which I was scared about because I thought, you know, a lot of the companies that we went to, they wanted to raise the law enforcement liability up just due to those claims. We were able to keep that down, which is, which was good. So no changes there. Like I said, here's just kind of a snapshot of those claims that I was talking about. When looking at your program, insurance companies say, you know, how much premium has been collected and what have we paid out? And that creates your loss ratio. So on the work comp side, for every dollar that you pay the insurance company, they're paying out a dollar and six cents in claims. For every dollar that you pay on every other line of coverage, they're paying out $2.62. That drives substantial loss ratios as you see there. For frame of reference, insurance companies get scared when the line starts going to 40% from a loss ratio standpoint. So taking that in consideration and seeing where you're at now, this is going to be driving your rates and your pricing this year. So when meeting with Lowell and his staff, we kind of, we always go through open claims, go through claims, you know, we have a consistent eye on this throughout the year. So right now, we're doing a couple of things to kind of see how can we address kind of the certain trends, the certain areas that need help. Law enforcement unfortunately seems to be the most frequent claim department just in terms of when looking back at the claim activity. You know, the safety committee making sure that they're in touch with department heads and seeing that all training is being covered. You know, Gallagher provides a lot of different risk control services, whether it be online or onsite, which Lowell and I have been working through and trying to get set up. And we're also working with the city now to kind of, you know, maybe especially with the new police chief here, we can have whatever, you know, Lowell and I are kind of always talking to make sure that anything that a department head mentions, that let's see if we can at least provide it. Whether that's employee handbook, sexual harassment training that's now mandated throughout the state. There's a number of things that we provide and are going to continue to provide. But we're also internally with Gallagher shifting to provide a report to the city addressing kind of these areas of claims and showing, here's your frequency, this is what needs to happen, you know, what are some preventative areas or trainings that we can do to kind of drive these costs down? So overall, you know, it's a lot of claims unfortunately on both sides of the house that are, that are driving things. Here's your year-over-year cost graph. So as you can see, last year you were at 501,553. This year you're at 631,688, which is about $130,000 increase, which is overall cost 25.9%. No, that is not a pretty number. However, from looking at those loss ratios, that's what the reality is in the marketplace. We mentioned in September to the city to expect a plus or minus 30% increase. So we were able to come down a little bit lower. But we did see it coming. We knew, again, we, with what the city was paying and the losses that we're having, it's just not sustainable. And here's kind of the next page is showing kind of your pricing history. So like we said, in the fall of 2017, that year you were paying 737. That's when you moved over to Gallagher. As you can see, the first year, a lot of the claims haven't come out or developed yet. Your pricing went down. Well, now you can see the result of, you know, frequent claim activity, especially severe claims. Additionally, the city has received $15,000 in safety grants over the years as well as the Lexible subscription that was reimbursed after year one. Here's kind of just a snapshot à la carte menu of some of the trainings and services that we provide for free. Again, you know, department heads, especially new department heads, you know, I always push to take a look and see, you know, what do you want and let us help you, which I think we're going to be addressing probably a little bit more, given the claims. So unfortunately, like I said, just going back to the pricing, that is just the reality of the marketplace. And we did check under every nook and cranny to make sure that, you know, we are still getting the most competitive pricing. Are there any questions on pricing, on losses, on anything Gallagher related?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. You noted, or you noted at the beginning of your presentation when you were talking to some of the carriers, some of them were looking to break out like law enforcement or something else. Talk to me about, what did you look at in regards to that? And then what was your conclusion and why?
So two of the lines of coverage that nationwide, kind of that are driving our property rates in the Midwest, given wind, hail, and lightning damage that a lot of our communities in Illinois have sustained. So I looked at that. I took out the property and said, you know, let's see if it makes sense to place this elsewhere, just one offline of coverage. That ended up being about $25,000 more than what Travelers is charging for the same type of coverage, and their deductible was the exact same. So from that sense, it just didn't make sense to move. Now, the law enforcement, given our claim activity, you know, that was a lot of the reasons that other carriers didn't want to touch it. So I said, okay, still provide a quote, carve out the law enforcement. And then I took the law enforcement and went to a specialty broker that all they handle is monoline law enforcement liability, specializing with communities that have had claims. He came back with pricing that was $10,000 to $20,000 more, but the deductibles were either $25,000 or $50,000, where your deductible now is 10. When I mentioned in that structure graph, I was saying I was surprised we were able to keep it at 10. So that was kind of the results of those two lines that I broke out.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mayor? And your fees are included in this proposal, correct?
Correct.
And also finally, I guess just noting from when we switched from ICRM or ICMRT.
Yeah, one of the acronyms.
One of those acronyms on there. What was, since we switched from that, even this proposal here is about $100,000 lower than what we were paying before we switched?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Ethan, when I'm looking back at your marketplace review and looking at the way you had the highlighted, which are your recommendations, under crime and cyber, I see that there's two companies, Hanover and BCS, instead of just one highlighted. Is there a reason why there are two highlighted there?
Yes, so Hanover covers your crime, and then BCS handles your cyber. So they're two different carriers.
I get that. And one more question, thank you. I see that law enforcement seems to be the most frequent claim department. Is this typical in other communities as well, or just Freeport?
It's very typical because throughout the marketplace, we're seeing the advantages and disadvantages of having body cameras. And when the claims do occur, they're not your standard public works claim that's 10,000 or 50,000, right? These things are, they're big. They're massive. And they have a lot of strength to them. So we have a number of communities that are dealing with, again, there's no such thing as a small law enforcement liability claim. So it is kind of the reality of just what is happening right now. You know, when, looking at it from a risk management standpoint, you know, what can a department do or what can a city do to, again, manage this risk and prepare for what is going to happen? And there's a number of things, and Lowell and I have talked about that, and we have some ideas. But, you know, overall, I think it's just something that when it happens, it's kind of a scenario where when it rains, it pours, because they are that big. And just within Illinois too, there's a lot of communities that have issues and they're kind of the ones that are placing their law enforcement liability separately with a $50,000 deductible, $100,000. So it is very frequent throughout the state and the nation.
So council knows that Matt was on the phone call with IPRF dealing with workman's comp. So they walked both of us through that, recommendations on the workman's comp side. And we are going to look at doing, taking the side, and we are going to look at doing, taking the safety grant and begin to implement some of those recommendations going forward.
One more follow-up, Mayor? Thank you. On a different line, I do appreciate that we still have a cost savings compared to what we had in the year 2016, 2017 with that ICRMT or whatever it was. We're still substantially below that, about 100,000 below that plus in cost. And do you foresee, if, if we have less claims in the foreseeable future, that our, our rates could go down again?
Absolutely. It's, especially on the workman's, workman's comp, you are, that loss ratio really drives how your rates are shifted. So, typically in work comp, you see those rates really reflected year-over-year. Now, the package side, you know, it's going to take probably a year or two to have some, some clean, clean law enforcement years to see those rates go down. However, again, as a whole, I think, you know, it's not like this is hit one and hit two's coming next year regardless of how you perform. So, it is based on, on the performance of the city. You know, the carriers, I think, were a little bit generous with the law enforcement and stuff because they do appreciate the way that Lowell and your staff, you know, claims are reported within probably an hour, I get a call from Lowell, and Diane is, you know, on top of every single claim. So, they do appreciate, you know, the timeliness and sensitivity that the city takes with losses, it's just a matter of not having them.
Mr. Selsinger, I do want to thank you for being so concise and able to explain this to us so I can easily understand it as well.
Any other discussion, council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Mysek.
So, to, to understand really where opportunities are to be proactive, like looking at various risk factors within the different areas of the city, is there anything that's been noteworthy with Freeport in comparison to other communities?
I can talk a little bit about that. So, one of the things that was talked, IPRF said that they see communities that are not, have not used the deployed tasers with all the police officers as their workman's comp goes up, and they, they have seen that. We also have some of the issues that were addressed in public works. We actually saw public works drop this year in workman's comp because we've gone through an aggressive OSHA review and training program. So, we're going to, and then the other thing is moving, moving on to LexiPol is a, it's a national standard, and I will give Matt credit and Todd Barklow before that. They've been trying to bring LexiPol on for over a year. We've run, hit, hit a few roadblocks along the way, but Matt's got, that's actually one of his performance measures is to fully implement LexiPol.
And the city receives a discount with LexiPol with us. So, that's a nice thing to consider.
Manager Crowe, could you give a 30-second, what is LexiPol?
I'm going to turn it over to Matt to give it better. LexiPol is a, it's a, it's a program and a process that, that helps us create our, our policy manual that gives us best practices. The policies are vetted by attorneys that keep monitoring changes in laws and just best practices, and they notify each agency in each state that, of the things that you need to change and look out in your, in your, in your policy manual. So, it's, it's an ongoing review of your policy manual. They, also, part of their package is, is a daily training on your, on your policy. So, every day when the officer gets into the car, logs on, it's going to give him a little question, once it's all up and running. It'll give him a, a little quiz on what our policies are to keep that fresh in his mind on, on what those things are. So, it's, it's ongoing training. Every time they get in the car, every time they report for duty, there's going to be something to keep their mind thinking about what our policies are, and they're going to be strong policies that are going to guide our officers in how they do their job.
Good to hear, thank you. Anything else, council? Ethan, thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
You, too. Item number nine is the second reading of ordinance 2019-61. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Appropriation ordinance fiscal year 2020, January 1 to December 31, 2020, for the city of Freeport.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the approval of the budget that we've been working on for the last three months. This is the second reading of that ordinance. It does require six votes and affirmative pass. Recommend from staff that we, as we said, it's a balanced budget. Our recommendation is to pass the appropriations ordinance for fiscal year. This will be our first fiscal year starting 1 January.
Any discussion, council?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Just note, we've had a lot of discussions in regards to this, so I'll keep this very brief, but we've got a balanced budget without any proposed additional revenues or taxes in regards to it, updates our capital plan when we're looking at the, the seven years in regards to that, addressed some of our other priorities, streamlined some of the things with the departments over the last couple of years. And so, so given that, I just ask for the approval moving forward on this.
I'd second that motion, if that's a motion.
It's not.
But I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the passage of ordinance 2019-61?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 10 is the second reading of ordinance 2019-62. Could you please read this?
An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020, for the city of Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, or is this Director Bukas? Director Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. This, this ordinance is basically keeping our tax rate the same. We do have a slight increase in our revenue because of the increase in the equalized value, but otherwise, everything else is the same. All the, all the funds that we will be generating from the property tax will be going towards
Discussion, council?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Just to confirm, for the city's portion, being one of the eight taxing bodies that makes up some of these property taxes, with us leaving the rate the same, as long as an individual's house value didn't change, they won't have a change on their property taxes for the city portion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the passage of ordinance 2019-62?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
And item number 11 is the second reading of ordinance 2019-63. Could you please read this?
An ordinance for the levy and assessment of task, taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1 and ending December 31, 2020, for the public library of the city of Freeport.
Discussion, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
And next is from item number 12 to item number 18, which is second reading of ordinance 2019-64 to 70. If the council wishes to act as one vote on all of these, we will need an omnibus vote. And so, if someone would care to make that motion, if you agree with that, otherwise we can go with all these different motions.
So moved.
So, we have a motion made by Alderman McLanahan for the omnibus.
Busker. I'll second it, though.
Okay. I'm sorry. Alderman Busker for the omnibus vote, seconded by Alderman McLanahan. Any further discussion on the omnibus vote? Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so now with that, we will have the second reading of ordinance 2019-64 to 70. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
An ordinance to abate the 2019 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds. And I will read all of the ordinances and all of the series. It's series 2013A, 2014A, 2014B, 2015A, 2016, 2018, and 2019A.
Discussion, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the passage of all of these?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
And the ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to or, item number 19, which is the second reading of ordinance 2019-71. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending Part VI General Offenses Code, Chapter 658, nuisances, adding Section 658.20, wood piles of the codified ordinances of the city of Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the ordinance to, with the modification that we had talked about with the listing out what the sort, size of a cord is, cord is eight feet by four feet by four feet, requires it to be off six inches off the ground, and this will prevent, it clarifies wood piles in our ordinances for the code, for nuisance enforcement enforcement. We recommend approval.
Manager Crowe, should this pass, what would be the effective date for implementation?
So, talking with Attorney Cox, it's, effective date is 10 days upon, on this, upon passing, unless...
Okay. Questions, discussions, council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Yes, I received some phone calls on this, a couple of quick questions. What's the, is the plan for announcing this ordinance or publicizing it so that people know, and are we going to be giving kind of a, kind of a warning so many days before we issue citations for a while, or what's the plan with this?
So, we'll go ahead and, we'll put this on our website, and also put out on the, out on Facebook, and the first time we go around, we'll issue a warning. We do have one person that had been cited previously for wood pile, and he, so he is beyond the warning phase, that one individual is, but the rest of them will receive warnings, and they'll have an opportunity to correct after receiving a warning.
Okay. Follow-up? And what is the proposed fine for this?
I'm going to ask Director Zepkov.
We can start with the minimum, which I'm not sure if that's specified in the ordinance,
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the passage of ordinance 2019-71?
Busker.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Item number 20 is the second reading of ordinance 2019-72. Could you please read this?
An ordinance amending the zoning classification of property located at 1108 Southwest Avenue, Freeport, from R1, which is a one-family residence district, to B1, which is a restricted retail business district.
Thank you. Director Zepkov, anything you'd like to add here?
Uh, no, nothing to add, no new correspondence with neighbors or anything on this from the last time, from the first reading. We would ask for approval still, thank you.
Discussion, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Abstain.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Item number 21 is the second reading of ordinance 2019-73. Could you please read this?
An ordinance granting a variance from requirements of Section 1252.05 concerning permitted uses in a B3 commercial and wholesale business district for property located at 420 West Meadows Drive, Freeport.
And same thing, Director Zepkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nothing to add on this one either from the original staff report, no correspondence with any property owners since first reading.
Discussion, council? Madam Clerk, please take the role in the passage of ordinance 2019-73.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Abstain.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Ordinance 2019-73 passes seven to zero with one abstention.
And item number 22, second reading ordinance 2019-74. Could you please read this?
An ordinance granting a variance from requirements of Section 1254.02D pertaining to minimum side yards in an M2 district for property located at 2946 South Walnut Road, Freeport.
And Director Zepkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. Once again, nothing to add, no new correspondence with any other neighboring property owner since first reading.
Yes.
Along those lines, so the museum next door has never given any indication on whether they have a problem with this or if they're okay with this?
I haven't heard from them at any point throughout the process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council? Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the passage?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysek.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
And item number 23 is the second reading of ordinance 2019-75.
An ordinance amending Section 1250.01 of the zoning code of the city of Freeport to allow the use of very large residential lots for banquet facilities as special use.
Thank you. Director Zepkov.
Uh, nothing to add on this one. It was adding the special use category for the large residential properties as a result of the donut hole annexation. Nothing new to add again since the first reading.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Thank you. You mentioned this last time, but I just wanted to clarify, this went through with the commission, and the commission, and you made some revisions after initially presenting to the commission. I just want to make certain, the, the commission feels comfortable that there are set parameters whereby they feel like they could approve or deny the special use. They don't feel like their hands are tied, is that correct?
No, they, they approved and recommended approval of the changes made to the ordinance from the first revision they saw.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Also, I believe this is a great opportunity for bringing in additional visitors to, to the area. So, really a great area to capitalize. Now, in terms of, if you have one such activities taking place, does, or should the ordinance contain any language regarding liability? Like, I mean, I would assume that a residential property being used would have...
This is strictly a zoning variance ordinance.
Okay.
Something along that lines would be more issued in the permit business phase for liability. Or it would be, could also be specified that they had to carry that as a tag on for the variance. This is really establishing the parameters within the zoning ordinance to allow somebody to come in and ask for a variance to do that. It's not, it's not really established and strictly putting those parameters within, so somebody can come in and ask for that request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, counsel? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the passage of ordinance 2019-75?
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight to zero.
Item number 24 is the first reading of ordinance 2019-76. Could you please read this?
Water Pollution Control Loan Program, Ordinance Authorizing Loan Agreement, Home Rule Entity for the City of Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the ordinance that was put together for IEP A wastewater revolving loan projects for the wastewater treatment facility improvements and the sewer replacement on Adams. This will, upon this approval, we will be able to go forward and ask for the forgivable loans. The level of forgiveness is less than the water. It's, I believe it's only, what?
Thirty, forty?
Thirty to forty percent currently, under the current state regulations, capital bill. There is a request for 17 million. That is more than what the initial Phase One of the project is, but that's, gives us some cushion as we're going forward for the loans. Our current estimated on the loans is 12.9 for the wastewater treatment facility and 1.8 million for Adams, for a total of about 14.7. But that, that gives us cushion if we need additional money and loans in there. We recommend moving this forward for approval.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
This is the procedural step that we need to do to take care of this. Obviously, if somebody's looking through this, they're not going to see the loan documents and the loan things. This is the procedural step that we go through with the IEP A that allows us to go down that road.
That's correct. We have not ever gotten, we've gone, the water treatment has been very standard. This will, this will be the first time the city, since the group of here have gone through the wastewater. This is the procedural step that says, yes, we can go seek those loans.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Well, I mean, obviously, the need's there. We've discussed the need, the projects in general and looking at them down the road in regards to it. Barring, you know, obviously further discussion, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel? Otherwise, we have on the, a motion on the floor made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Berberay to move ordinance 2019-76 on to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 25 is the first reading of ordinance 2019-77. Could you please read this?
An ordinance declaring Public Works and Library Equipment in Surplus.
And Director Carr and Huff Heinz?
This is actually the libraries. Can I put this down? I mean, this, okay. Own surplus sale, and then Public Works added stuff on it. So, we have our own round. We've been in the building for 16 years, and we have yet to do this. So, there's a lot. Do you have any questions?
So, if someone was interested in looking at these, they just contact the library? They just go to the library? What's the procedure?
Either one will work. All of the managers are aware that this is going to be, going to the bidding process. So, if people are wanting to know and see some of the things, they know where all of the stuff is located and can do that by either stopping in the library or calling.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Busker?
Motion to move it forward.
Thank you.
Director Carr, did you want to add anything?
It is majority of their items. We do have two pieces of equipment that are on it. That'll be out at the Public Works. They're sitting outside, and so they're pretty easy to access and see.
Unless there's anything else, counsel, we have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Parker to move ordinance 2019-77 on to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 26 is the first reading of ordinance 2019-78. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
A supplemental appropriation ordinance of the City of Freeport for fiscal year 2019B, beginning May 1 and ending December 31, 2019.
And Director Bukas?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a reappropriation of ordinance, rebalancing our books at the end of this fiscal year between our revenues and our expenditures. This is done annually as we sometimes expect certain revenues or expenditures to take place. With this proposed reappropriation ordinance, it shows that the general fund will finish the year with about $114,000 surplus. The water fund with about $200,000 surplus. The sewer fund will be balanced at zero. Storm, stormwater fund at about $50,000, and the library at $322,000. This large amount in the library is basically due to the fact that they receive property taxes late in this fiscal year, and they will need those monies to operate in the beginning of the year 2020.
Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
I'd like to make a motion to move this forward to the next council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Parker to move ordinance 2019-78 on to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Is there any further discussion, counsel? And we will move on to item number 27 for approval of bids. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Approval of the concurrence with Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, Division of Aeronautics for a ward of Albertus Airport fencing.
Manager Crowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We were, this is the next phase of our airport layout plan. It's the fencing. It'll be along the area, some of the area of the new road, as well as along that section towards Baileyville Road to replace the fencing. We went down and reviewed this with IDOT in October. It was bid out, as is required, at Springfield. The amount was 156,312. It was well, well, fencing incorporating. We have to return this within 30 days. We received it towards the end of last month. This is, quest has been made, subject to the contractors' compliance with all bonding and letting from the administrative procedures. Our portion of match is 5%, which will be coming out of the funds, which are paid to us from the state to support the airport.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. Pursuant to the parameters of this funding, the bidding had to be done by downstate with IDOT, correct?
That's correct.
And this was the low bidder?
This was the low bidder.
Do we have any issues with the bidder?
We do not. This was recommended to us by IDOT to approve this bidder.
Thank you.
Anything further, counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
I could make a motion to approve this bid?
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman McLanathan to approve the bid as stated. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item number 28 is another approval of a bid. If you could please read this?
Bid opening November, November 15, 2019 for demolition services for nine properties.
Assistant Heinz?
Thank you. So, we released this bid on October 30 for the demolition and asbestos abatement services for the nine properties that we recently purchased from the county tax trustee as part of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources Flood Mitigation Grant. So, the cost for the demolition and asbestos abatement services will be reimbursed through the IDNR grant. And per the grant program, the properties that were purchased must be demolished and turned to open and green space by June 30 of 2020. The bidders will be awarded properties individually. We received five total bids, and after review, three of the bidders met all of the criteria and were recommending approval to accept the lowest bids. By Fisher Excavating, the total comes to $39,423 for them. JMP Trucking, which is $30,875. Northern Illinois Services, which is $28,545, and the total is $98,843, which again would be reimbursed through the IDNR grant.
Thank you. Questions, discussion, counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you. Ms. Heinz, I see that they're highlighted on the, on the chart that we were issued. It's really hard to read the highlighting on here. So, it took me a while to figure this out. Now, if the company, say Fisher Excavating, has the three properties, do they get paid as a lump sum when they finish all three, or do they get paid individually by each property?
That is a good question.
They'll get, they'll get paid as they complete each property. So, as we go forward, because then we can, as they complete each property, they send us our bill. We can pay them and then submit that reimbursement to the state. So, it really depends on how they submit the bill to us. Fisher tends to submit the bills in one lump sum. JMP Trucking tends to give us by property. And Northern Illinois Services is again by property. Kirsten has reached out to each one of them and make sure that they were aware that they were low bidders and that they were okay with only doing a port, individual properties on this. And they are also aware that they have to have this done and completed, and bill's submitted to us by the 30th of June.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to state that in the past, under other mayoral administrations, we've had problems with, they would just do lump sum bids per company. And I was one of them that kept pushing for the cherry picking bids, I call them, so you could pick and choose and have those for lower amounts. And the rest of the council too backed me up on that. I know it's a lot more work for you to go through all these separate bids and, and to do this and try not to make any of them mad, but it's really in the best interest of the City of Freeport. So, thank you for your time, and you also, Manager Crowe, for dealing with all this.
Mayor? Want to highlight what Alper's Brasshaw was saying. It looks like it saves about $10,500 by going this way as opposed to just going with the lump sum package by one. And when you said it's reimbursable, under this, it's 100% reimbursable for the city, correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
There's no other discussion. I'd make a motion to approve the spin as stated.
Seconding.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Ross for the approval of bids as stated. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
And item number 29 is the approval of the quotes from Gallagher from Travelers. Manager Crowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As briefed by Ethan, Travelers has come in as our low bidder. It, for the insurance, our recommendation going forward is to award, as is Gallagher's recommendation, is we award the complete package as given for property liability. And then for the other insurance, Hanover, and, I don't see, I didn't write down the second name, for the cyber insurance as we go forward. We award this complete package. We will sign, if approved, we will sign the paperwork and forward it back to Gallagher, and the insurance will go into effect the 1st of January, next set of rates. Thank you.
Discussion, counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you. In a notation from Manager Crowe, he had stated to us, he had, we had anticipated some of this increase and have money set aside in the budget to cover the increase. Do we have enough money set aside in the budget to cover this increase, since it was substantially more than I had supposed?
We will have money to pay the bill when the bill comes.
Borrow from Peter to pay Paul?
Well, like, we did budget $50,000 additional. So, we are a little short, so we're going to watch the budget and see how it comes out.
We had set aside $130,000 to go into reserve under this budget, and we'll see, we may not be able to, as is required by the ordinance, if we have to tap into that reserve to pay that, we'll come back to council and ask to tap into that reserve to pay that petition.
Thank you, Manager Crowe. Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw?
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Unless there's further discussion, the motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Parker for the approval of the quotes as stated. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Berberay?
Aye.
Bornnaman?
Aye.
McLanathan? Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We will move on to reports of department heads. Finance?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing to report tonight.
You?
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
Not that easy. Actually, it is pretty easy. I just wanted to say, we're coming out of budget season. Thank you for all your work putting this together. I know you were one of the instrumental pieces in, in getting us to the balanced budget in the way that it is and all the work that went into it. And now you got the financial software that you're going to be having fun with too. So, thanks for the work.
Thank you.
Community Development?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to mention the 2020 facade improvement program is online, and now we're marketing it. I'll be at the Downtown Business Owners Meeting, which is a night meeting this month at 9:00 East on, what would the day be, the 18th, as well as I've enlisted the help of GFP to help market it to downtown business owners as well. We're holding a application workshop in this room on January 7 at 7:30 in the morning, and applications will be due on the last day of February. Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan?
I know we have the demolitions that we're looking at, that we just approved here in regards to on the, in the east side. And I know you've had a substantial increase of the amount of inspections and tickets issued and compliance in regards to that. Where do we stand in regards to pursuing grants for additional demolition or rehabilitation work on other properties? Because we put a little bit of a pause on non-east side, given all the work that we're doing with the grants. But where do we stand on grants, opportunities for moving forward, so we don't lose ground on the rest of the city on that?
Sure. We apply for every opportunity that exists specifically for property demolitions as well as rehabilitations. You might recall several months back, we were awarded, it was either $37,000 or $39,000. I can't quite recall from the abandoned properties program. That money remains unspent. Of course, that's only enough to demolish maybe two or three properties, but that money's out there. And, and as noted, we, you know, we, we apply for anything that's out there.
Additionally, is the Northwest Illinois Land Bank under Region 1 was awarded the largest amount for their land bank. They're one of only three established land banks. We are a member that that money is to go forward and be used to purchase properties. And they've identified properties based upon our abandoned property that they can purchase. We have to, in the next, we'll be talking about that at the next land bank meeting as we go forward, which, which one of the properties there are six communities, seven communities counting that are involved in the land bank and as well as Winnebago and Boone County. And that money, it's the largest amount they do, and it's the seed money to start that program. We also submitted for the CBDG grant as we go forward that will be, it's targeting, we submitted for 30 properties. It's tar, will target 10 to bring up to $50,000 for each one of those properties, bring them back up to standards. They have to be owner occupied for a period of five years after that money's put into the program. And we're waiting, that's been forwarded to the state.
Follow up, Mayor? What's our timeline that we're looking on? Like you said, it's only a handful that we have the funding for. But what's our timeline or planning for use of those funds here?
You know, it's pretty much just choosing which properties we want to use them on. If we do want to use that east of the pack, or if we want to use that for some, you know, west of it, it's just choosing properties and, and moving forward from there.
Our focus really from the staff, from across the staff, over the last 90 days has been to get the pre-disaster mitigation grant, get the IDNR money going. So, now we can refocus and get those three, two to three additional properties bid out, identified and bid out. Since we're in full end, we're just waiting for the last signatures, and we'll be coming back for you for an additional 12 properties to demo east of the pack. And then the DECO properties we've identified, and we're making some small tweaks on them. They've got to get through state historical preservation before approval to move forward to demo those, and that money's set aside. So, those three properties, we'll begin to put, move them back up to the prior So those three properties will begin to put, move them back up to the priority as we're kind of in a lull phase as we're waiting for the pre-disaster mitigation grant to move forward.
And thanks for all the work in getting that grant out the door from our standpoint.
Anything else?
Not in this department.
Okay. Public works?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As probably people west of Park have seen, our guys are out picking up leaves on that side of town now. We have completed the east side and it no longer looks like the east side has been done. People have been putting leaves out back behind as we've been continuing on, so they're going to keep picking up leaves, so we're just going to keep going until we can.
Thank you. Fire.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had firefighter McCracken resigned. He took a position with the Rockford Fire Department. He started the fire academy there today. One of our internal members retired or resigned from the mechanic's position, be operating as a firefighter moving forward after December 1st. Don't forget that this Thursday, there's going to be quite the battle between the police and fire department for Battle of the Badges. Come out and show your support of the police and fire departments as we ring at Walmart and endure whatever shenanigans, we can come up for each other. I think the planning is underway. Also, the city, through Gallagher and Empower, received, finally received our wellness incentives. I received them in the mail over the holiday weekend. I inventoried those and they're going to be posting to the employees' distribution plan tomorrow. So if anyone's listening tonight, stay tuned, you'll be able to get your health incentive sometime tomorrow.
Thank you. Police.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 14th, we're going to be conducting our police test for new candidates, the physical and written test to start that process of hiring new officers. And also on the 14th, we have our Annual Shop With a Cop Program that's also going to take place at Walmart.
And do you have the, how does that work for funding?
We've traditionally done fundraisers in the past, but we accept donations on a year-round basis. Some people always come in with some money and donate. Some people see us out there while we're doing it and donate money out there. So we always accept the donations for that specific program.
Do you have a goal in what you spend per child?
We usually spend about between $130 and $150 per child. It just depends on how many children show up on that day or how many we can get to come. So we have a set amount that we always have, so it's all dependent upon the attendance that we receive.
So you don't know until you're there?
Correct.
And last year, how many children did you get to shop with?
I believe it was 16. It's always right around that. All the schools in the county recognize people that might need a little extra help during the holiday season, give us names and we reach out to them and try to get at least one from each school to come.
Wonderful. Thank you. Water and Sewer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to go and give an update as it relates to Float Street. Basically, as of last Tuesday, the construction that was going to be done for this calendar year has wrapped up. And granted, we started in mid-May, ended up basically the end of November. That's how it was. There's still a small portion to do next year, but I imagine that that's only going to take two to three weeks to go and do. And that's basically going to be at Galena to connect the section, north of Galena to the section south of Galena on float. And I'm reasonably sure that the switch is going to be thrown to test the solar farm for power generation. So I'll be looking forward to that this week.
Good, thank you. IT. Thank you. And library.
Well, it's everybody's favorite time of year in Freeport. The Festival of Trees is officially underway, so voting started today and you'll have until December 14th to come in and vote on your favorite tree. And then the trees will be up until December 28th. So come on down, vote for a tree and come say hi to me. Have a good night.
Thank you. And Director Hines.
I just wanted to provide an update on the pre-disaster mitigation grant because last week we heard back from the state and they gave us some recommendations on changes. They did say that overall, the grant looks really good, so it's promising. The changes were just, some of it was things that we had already done. They just asked for it in a different format, so it was really minor. But we will have the final, I'm working with Region 1 Planning now, we'll have the final grant application in by Friday, the 6th.
So like council know, we did get letters of endorsement from Senator Durbin, Senator Duckworth and Congresswoman Bustos.
Okay, thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo what's already been said about the work from the department heads and Randy and Michelle and Tommy, the whole financial department. Many Saturdays and late in the evening, Randy and I were working here until 8, 9 o'clock at night to get the budget through and get it done. A lot of modifications, good work. This is the third budgets I've been here that's been fully balanced and in the black, which is good work. It will help us for our bond rating as we go forward. Received today, the second notification from the Housing Authority for the demolition, second official and final notification from the Housing Authority for the demo of the properties east of the Pecatonica. Any comments can be forwarded to the Housing Authority. It is posted on our website as of this afternoon for anybody that is interested in reading. Again, the goal is to have those properties vacated and demoed by the end of next year. We currently have no issues for the committee of the whole as we push these, the financial ordinances forward and got them approved. So I will keep you posted as if we have anything coming out of our staff meeting tomorrow that will need to be brought to the committee of the whole. If not, my recommendation is to cancel the committee of the whole.
Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Yes, City Manager Crowe. When it comes to the Housing Authority, the residents being, when it comes to demolishing the properties, have they spoke about where the residents may be going?
So the residents are being placed on a voucher program throughout the community and being able to actually, anybody that's participating in the vouchers for rental of properties, this is being directed, HUD is directing the demolition of those properties. This was not at the choice of the Housing Authority, based upon the last flood that came through, that was, if felt the properties are no longer safe to live in.
Good follow. Yes, correct, but my main question was, they're placing the residents in rental property throughout the city of Freeport?
Not only in the city of Freeport, throughout the county and other places that are available for vouchers. They're working with two other housing authorities to help place them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Almost acted, or asked Director Carr on it, but I needed to give you guys a break after a while, so I'll ask you, in regards to the leaves out there, as you said, you're on the west side, the northwest side, doing it right now. Back on the east side, there's some more, probably with, you know, this last wind event and things like that. And there's been, a lot of people have asked us questions in regards to, are we going to keep doing it as long as we can? My understanding from my discussions with you is that as long as it's plausible weather-wise, we will be out there continuing to do it, trying to get every leaf that we can in the city. Is that accurate?
That's correct. We've, one of the holdups we've run into this year is the farmers have also been affected by the weather. The farmer as of a week ago had not yet gotten his corn and so that's, he is piling up leaves, so that may slow us down a little bit until he gets his corn all harvested. And then, but we will continue to work, pick up the leaves until our first major snowfall in December and we'll try and get as much, we're going to get at least one pass through the city on all the areas that have leaves out.
Okay. And then also, as we're heading into the, you know, snow season, we've, obviously between Flo, Woodside, Wheatland, Wild Oats, Farmdale, there's a lot of roadwork, but there's also after this, some of the freezing, we're seeing some of the puddles. What can folks expect in regards to the hot mixes and hot patches and scheduling that throughout the winter here?
I'll turn that over to Director Carr.
So the same crews that do the potholes are also the ones that pick up the leaves. So as much as it is a pain, we either have to deal with one or the other. The guys can't deal with both at the same time. So right now, they're concentrating on leaves, but as soon as we can get done with the leaves, we will be putting pothole patching back into as a priority.
And our hot box is fully up and operational. I know we had an accident last, an unlicensed driver ran into the back of a truck, damaging it, but it is up and operational.
Thank you. Anything else, Manager Crowe?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. No, that's it.
Okay. Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank everyone that took place, that participated with the FACs donations from the Homeless and Hunger Awareness. Their goal was $15,000 and they exceeded that with surpassing $25,000. For those of you that helped, thank you very much. Salvation Army is in full swing now with bell ringing, so if you would like to participate in that, you can either call directly down to the Salvation Army or you can go online to registeredorings.com. And then just a reminder that here at City Hall, we are collecting for Toys for Tots as well as soup for the FACs. So if you have unwrapped toys for children you'd like to drop off here at City Hall or if you have cans of soup next year at the grocery store and you want to pick up a few extra, we're receiving that until Christmas and then we will deliver those things as well, so.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Do you have the boxes set up for the toys?
They are. And the box is in the Water and Sewer Department.
Because I have a bunch in my car right now. I didn't have any drop-off places yet.
So yes, you can put it down there.
Thank you.
Okay, council.
Mayor, if she brings it in, we'll make sure that gets down there.
Alderman Busker.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Brashaw.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Mysick.
I did want to say a big thank you to Lowell and all the folks, I think the folks you've already mentioned Lowell, who put together the budget and were patient in answering all of our questions, especially many of us just coming through this the first time, but I feel very confident that all the bases are covered very well and I believe the city's very well represented in that. So thank you for that. And then also, just to echo a lot of the things said today, Brian Borger is really an amazing person serving in our community and just really wanted to recognize him personally as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burberry.
Hard to believe a year has gone by since I was appointed to the council. As they say, time flies when you're having fun. Not quite sure if fun is the exact word I would use, but it's a good phrase. Spending a little bit of my life in educational fundraising, but most of it in business, I really do appreciate the work that this management team has done in planning, strategic planning, capital planning, planning day to day. You can see that in the effectiveness of the departments. Hats off to Manager Crowe and to the mayor for, and the department heads for getting things done. It's, when you're sitting on the outside for the last 50 years, you don't know what's going on. You really don't. When you get on the inside, you have a better chance to see what's happening. So I would echo the mayor's words as used, Freeport's a great place to live, work and play, and I'm glad to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burberry. Alderman Borneman.
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman McLanathan.
Nothing further.
And Alderman Ross.
Nothing.
Alderman Parker.
Real quick question for the chief. When's a new officer, no, police chief, new officer testing and where's it at this year?
December 14th at the junior high.
What time?
It's starting at noon.
And it's the Shop With a Cop at 10?
Shop With a Cop is at 10, yes.
Okay.
Then a quick question, just a comment to the mayor is I want to thank you for recognizing Brian. I worked a lot of years with him, he's a good friend and he deserved that and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Then that leaves us with public comments.
Mayor, we got that Snowshoes tournament coming up on 14th.
It's what tournament?
Snowshoes. I do snowshoes.
Wow.
Special Olympics. I got first place a couple years.
Wonderful, Tommy. You are quite the athlete.
And we want to know if you, you wanted to get a award.
I don't snow shoe.
I mean, for the awards for people for Special Olympics, did a good job with snowshoes.
Is that here in Freeport?
It's in someplace in.
Chestnut Mountain?
Chestnut Mountain.
Well, probably I won't be able to do that, but you can have the director reach out and we can try to see if we can find someone that can do that. All right. That all, Tommy?
Anyone knows how's that art plaza? Any updates for the art plaza by Douglas?
The art plaza, has their structure going up? Looks really good. Do you want to put a few input on that, Director Carr?
Yes, all the pipe work for the splash pad is in place. There is no concrete poured there until next spring. All the sidewalks are being delayed due to the leaf pickup.
But it does look nice, doesn't it?
Yeah. And you did a good job. What about that land wall by Star Meadows or something, I saw them getting.
Anybody want to?
TriStar?
TriStar is, you know, they're building their addition as well as the headquarters down there. It's a large, over a million dollar expansion.
And Joey Mill, you did a good job, but, and we saw you in the newspaper. You did, that's a nice article you have.
Thank you, Tommy. Appreciate it. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we have item number 35, which is executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122 C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Pursuant to 5 IL 120 slash 2 C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Thirdly, pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C11, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into the closed session?
So moved.
Seconded. We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Borneman to enter into executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.